Thank you all for coming. We went to the site visit, some of us were there. It's a very nice cemetery. There's a lot of really old stones, I was amazed.
Could we go around it?
Yeah, I'm just gonna do that, yes. So, thank you everyone for going to the site visit. So, I'll start, I'm Denise Wheeler, Slough Board.
Cliff Edmonds, Callas Slough Board.
Sharon Nguyen-Fannin, Callas Slough Board.
Katie Lane-Carniss, I'm the recording secretary.
I'm Fletcher Dean, Callas Cemetery Commission.
I'm Rose Palchuk from the Callas Slough Board.
I'm Andy Christensen from Poplar Hill Cemetery Association.
And Laura Brown from Poplar Hill Cemetery Association.
Hi, Jennifer Whitman from the Cemetery Commission.
Jim? Oh, John, we all know-
John, Callas Slough Board, John Braven.
Jim Barlow, Town Attorney.
Paul Masetti from Poplar Hill.
Say, okay. One, any, none Cemetery Commission? Were you chairing tonight? The unofficial person here. I just saw some headlights. So, I'm betting that's probably John's answer, I would imagine. So, I was trying to figure out the best way to do this. We normally at the beginning of our meeting take public comment on non-agenda items. Hearing none. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Alright. So, as I said, we went to the cemetery and did a site visit. It was some pretty cool stuff there, I would say. And we looked at the stream bank that was eroding. And, you know, so there's obviously some work that needs to be done on some of the stones. And some of those stones are really, really old, back to the 1800s. That was pretty cool.
Well, Weston Kate is buried there.
Yeah. Did you see the big Kate stone?
Yeah.
So, I didn't know, and maybe everybody else does, and I'm the only one who didn't know. But, there's a difference, there's municipal cemeteries, public cemeteries, religious cemeteries, and nonprofits. So, the ones that Callas currently oversees are municipal cemeteries. I don't, I'm not sure what you classify yourself as, if you're a nonprofit or you're a public-
Nonprofit.
You're a nonprofit, okay. And then there's religious. And I assume the religious ones, the whatever church or religion they're affiliated with, take care of those. So, that was, I didn't know there was like four different kinds. Hi, John.
Hi, how are you?
Fred, how are you?
Yeah, very good, sorry I'm late.
That's okay. We just did introductions, we, some of us went to the site.
Did you make it down to the site?
Yep, yep, yeah, it was a pretty amazing place.
Yeah.
Very cool. We did roundtable introductions, so, just for the record, do you want to state your name?
Okay.
Tell us who you are.
John Slupanis, I'm chairing the Cemetery Commission.
Is anybody else from the cemetery coming? Randy's not coming, right?
You're just missing Randy.
Randy?
Yeah.
Maybe he'll show, maybe not, I don't know. So anyways, thank you for sending us all the information that I asked you for. And I wonder if you can just kind of recap for us the situation that you're in.
I guess I'd say first of all that our Cemetery Association was eagerly hoping, it was hoping that we could hang on to it, the cemetery, for a long time and, you know, take care of it. We're very proud of the cemetery. For those who may not know, it was established in 1872, it was the first nonprofit-
Yeah, I saw that.
-in the state of Vermont.
Oh, right?
Yeah.
And we got an award a little while, a few years back, recognizing that fact by the Secretary of State.
Wow.
The problem that we faced was, I guess you could say it's climate change, because we had a series of storms, particularly the storm that came just before Hurricane Irene.
That was in May, right?
That was in May.
Yeah.
And that's when we had the mudslide, landslide that you saw.
So, that was treed?
What's that?
That embankment was treed, just like the rest of it?
Dead trees, yeah.
Okay.
That was May of 11, right? 2011?
Yeah. That kind of threw a monkey wrench into our plans, and we quickly realized that we couldn't, you know, we couldn't even imagine with the meager funds that we had to address that problem in any meaningful way. We lived along with what we had for a while, thinking maybe some magic would appear, which didn't, until this year we realized that our funds were gonna run out. And we still didn't, you know, we had people come in and give estimates, you know, people look at it, just pro bono, just looking at it.
You mean to fix the stream bank?
Yes.
Yeah, 'cause in the minutes it says 100,000.
Yeah, that was a number that, Bill George told us that, I think at the annual meeting on the advice of somebody, he had come in and looked at it, but because it was pro bono, it was not an official estimate. He was just giving us a ballpark estimate. So, that's what triggered our vote to turn it over to Callas, 'cause it's within the town of Callas.
Right. It looked though by the names on the headstones that there was significant number of names that I recognized that were East Montpelier, some were Callas.
Plainfield.
I'm assuming there's probably, Plainfield Hollister was there.
That Hollister would've been in North Montpelier.
Oh.
That family is one of the original founders that set up a nonprofit for the cemetery back in 1872.
I think most of them originally were in North Montpelier, but North Montpelier is in-
East Montpelier, right.
So, yeah.
So, in looking at the Edward Jones, the minutes of your meeting said that there was like 5,000 and something dollars.
Last year.
Last year.
That is 55.
But now there's, now there's 22, 30?
No.
22, 30, $2,023.
Right.
And what caused the, I mean, is it the ma- what caused the decline in the funds? That was spent on primarily mowing costs this last summer. It was yours, but-
And who does the maintenance there?
Wyatt.
Wyatt Hume. And he's been very good about being frugal. So, but for the past several years, we have spent a little under 3,000 a year, and it has not gone up. I think it went up like 65 dollars this year, maybe? So, it's been pretty stable.
Yeah.
But it's almost 3,000, which makes sense.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it doesn't look like there's that many plots left available to fill. I don't know what the right terminology is, you'll have to excuse me, I don't know what the right cemetery words are, but spaces available, rooms to rent, I don't know.
A lot of our rooms for rent went over the bank.
Did it sell out? Right. Did any of this, when that stream bank eroded, did any of the caskets-
No.
-go into the river?
No. That's one of the, I'd say that was a point of urgency in our annual meeting, is we can see it's getting very close now, especially on, if you drive up there on the right-hand side. We had placed, on the, the day after the landslide, we went, we put stakes in the ground. You might've seen some stakes.
Yes, we saw two of them.
And some of those stakes have gone over the edge now since-
So, it's continuing to further erode?
It's continuing to further-
Yeah, and there's, like, there's a set of stones there that look like they're the closest to being the ones that might erode away?
There's a big stone with some wee stones-
Yeah.
Yeah.
-on the other side of it, yeah.
And, I mean, other parts of the cemetery that it doesn't look, you know, doesn't look bad at all.
Yeah, we've done a number of things to try to take care of it. We've had, we've got, tried to clean the stones. We've had, we've had help from U32, they can call it SCOP, but seniors doing community service in the springtime.
Yeah, you guys have used them, right? They've helped you?
No, we've talked about it.
And, and we worked with them to try to remove invasive buckthorn, honeysuckle, and other invasive plants around the perimeter of the cemetery.
I think for three years, right, Andy?
Yeah, I think for about three years now, we've had them come and spread-
And we've worked together, yeah.
Yeah. Well, and there's some pretty old stones there that I imagine look like they could really use a good cleaning, you couldn't even, you couldn't read the words.
The last time we had them cleaned was probably 10, 15 years ago, professionally. I went to the Fairview demonstration on cleaning stones. Andy and I, we now have D2, so Andy and I hope to get up and do some-
D2 is-
D2 is the-
The non-toxic?
The non-toxic thing that takes the burn off.
Nice.
Yeah, it's, it does, yeah.
Yeah? Good.
Well, how much, how much land was there? Like, you know, you can see that there was a landslide, but I don't, maybe it's just I don't have the eye to know, how, you know, was it, like, how long was the table, like, what was the depth of land that used to be there that just went down?
Um, well-
It sounded like, why is it with this room?
You know, it's hard, it's hard for me to estimate. We put, the stakes, we put three feet back from the edge, but that was after the landslide.
Right.
And most of those are, some of them are gone and most of them are-
Right, and somebody said there used to be trees there, was it you, Fletcher?
Yeah.
Maybe Fletcher-
And there were trees all the way down to the, to the bottom.
Yeah.
It all just went, trees and all.
But you can look over and see-
You can see the trunks that are still in water.
Yeah.
Well, I noticed the gray, and in fact Fletcher brought up, it's so sandy, you would think the water would percolate in before it went over the brink, but explaining that Irene came to town and it must've really inundated and saturated things, so things flowed over the edge, and that's what caused it. But you can see everything's kind of funneled toward that really severely eroded corner, where the big collapse happened.
And that looks like the place that you would need to-
Yeah, you'd want to fix that drainage problem and redirect the flow away from that edge. That's, that's, that's what's causing it to continue this slump.
Well, one other thing I may say about space available, we went to the Vermont Cemetery Association Annual Meeting, and they had a presentation there about how to reclaim space for your cemeteries. There is like a roadway there, there's a place on the west side towards Route 14 that could be used for cremains.
Now, tell me, explain to me what cremains is.
That's instead of a casket, like a full burial casket, you could have, you know, smaller boxes or whatever for cremains.
Cremation, okay, that's what I thought it meant, I want to make sure I understood it.
So, there are some strategies that could be used, and we're finding that more and more people are actually interested in cremated, so there's-
Right. And when was, I mean, I don't recall what you said you charged for a plot and for the perpetual care, but when, I don't know, you know, what you charge now, and when was the last time you increased that?
2013, wasn't it, Andy?
I believe so.
Did you increase?
Yeah, but we are still way below Greenmont Cemetery.
Greenmont Cemetery, way below, but in a-
What they charge, they charge 800 dollars.
How much is in the minutes somewhere?
Where, which one is that?
The one in Montpelier.
Okay.
What do we charge?
What you're having, holding. I would say like six. What are you, you might remember, Dr. Matt, what do we charge?
I think it's 800.
Green Mountain, it says it's 800. Well, that's what Green Mountain charges.
And that doesn't include the perpetual care, right?
Yeah.
We don't say perpetual care.
What do you call it?
It's just not part of it.
But then what do you-
So, you just pay for the burial-
And that's it?
And the space, like you pay for the-
There it is, right here. It's probably in there too, but, yeah. The cost of cremation is, cremation burial, is, Green Mountain charges 800, Poplar Hill charges 300 on weekdays and-
Oh, I didn't see that in the minutes.
Yeah.
I couldn't figure out why it was different on the weekend than on weekdays.
Well, because we have to pay, the Sexton charges more. And both of them include 100 dollars.
So, this is for 300 and 375, this is for the actual-
Plot.
The burial?
Yes, the burial, because the plot already is owned, in most cases, they have been.
So, this is- You're paying for like the, the space, and then you're paying for the act of the burial.
But what you got, but the fees you're describing are for the burial, so are there, and the plots are already owned?
Yes.
So, that's a different question then, are there plots left to sell?
There are a couple, and I think it's on the map that Andy sent out. Not many, unless you, not many for the casket.
It looked like there was like, maybe there was like four, maybe?
Yeah, but if you want to go to cremation burial, then you could increase that.
So, there's, so it's 300, it'll say, I get buried on Wednesday, it's gonna cost 300 dollars total period, there's no other cost involved?
If you have a lot already.
If you have a lot, okay, so how much, you have like maybe four lots left, how much are the lots?
Those are full burial lots.
Yeah. What does that mean?
For casket, that's what it's supposed to-
They'll take four caskets, right?
There.
You're charging 800 for four plot?
It's in our bylaws, which Andy had a copy of here.
So, a full, full interment lot, that was 600 dollars.
What is that?
I was hoping that's the right year.
Full interment lot?
That's for the caskets, for four, I believe it's four caskets, right?
And it's 600 dollars for four?
Yeah, for one lot. So, the four, if you, one, four lots, it'd be 600 times four, 2,000 plus-
You can fit four caskets in on one lot? Denise was asking. One lot can accommodate four caskets?
No.
Oh, okay.
And that's my question, is how much, is it for, so it's so much for a lot, so much for the burial. So, the cremation stuff was 300 and 375, and the lot is 600.
Andy?
Yeah?
How mu- how many plots are in yet that lot?
Actually, this says full interment lot, single grave, 600.
Single grave.
Three by five, yeah.
Three and a half feet by 11 feet. And a single cremation lot is 350 dollars.
What are you looking at?
Actually, let me, let me handle this.
I think you have, I don't have mine anymore, it's there next to-
Tell me you'll copy it.
Sure. That'd be great. I'm just trying to get, understand how financially it got so desperate, I guess.
We stopped selling lots. There weren't any more lots that were advertised.
Okay.
For a long time, we thought it was, oh, both.
Oh, okay.
Remember what a cemetery looks like, it's full, there can also be graves that are no longer marked. That's a big question, the rest of the cemeteries in Callas. There are, it may look like there is space, but there may be a stone that's been taken away because it crumbled. So, it's one of those things that we have, we would have to like hire someone to do-
We have to do like a, some kind of a detective thing?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, like Wyatt is very wary of that, because he has other places where there's, so it just that, because you were saying, it looks like there's spaces, that might not necessarily be spaces that are actually present.
But some of the old lots were a four-casket lots. And there's one monument and maybe a cremation burial there, or one casket, and there's still all this sort of space.
Okay, so there's space available.
Yeah.
Right there, for instance, yeah.
Do you have good maps of that? Are there good maps of all of those stuff there?
There are maps.
We don't have, I'm not judging you.
We have, we have a collection map, we actually have the original map from the 1900s, and we have, well, you have a map, Dave Coburn is sort of our database guy. That was the thing I sent here.
Right, yeah, I saw that, database.
Yeah.
But you know, I don't believe that there's many stones, or any stones, that are really crumbled up there, they're pretty well-preserved, or whatever the reason is.
Yeah, I saw one that had been, it looked like the top had been knocked off and somebody put it back together, it was a really old one.
The only extra grave with sunmark I'm aware of is this one lot, there was a hired man, I was told he'd be buried there, and he's there somewhere in that lot, but didn't get marked.
Who?
We don't know. But he was a hired man for the guy who went from-
It's Sharon's buddy.
And Sharon.
Oh, yeah. There's probably more than one, but, but, yeah, that sounds, what are you talking about?
Never mind, it's not, it's not relevant, it's just interesting.
I'm gonna say just a few words about the Perpetual Care Fund, which is probably misnamed. Back in the teens and the twenties, a perpetual care fund was established, the results of the monies of which are gonna be touched from, things like mowing and that sort of thing. And this summer, I took on myself the task of digitizing the entire archive.
Wow.
In several boxes, which I'm hoping that either the town clerk here will be excited to receive-
Or not.
Or not. Or, if not, maybe I checked with the Rhode Historical Society or something, but we have a lot of paper. And in the process of doing that scanning, I discovered something interesting, is that during the, up until 1959, people paid a fee every year for the mowing, and-
The families.
The families.
Yeah.
And if they didn't pay it, they didn't get mowed. And certain people could go and mow their lot, plot.
And they wanted it, yeah.
In lieu of paying this sort of annual fee. In addition to that, monies were raised each year with an annual fundraising effort, sending letters out to the members that own lots of the cemetery. In 1959, there's a rubber band full of envelopes about this, that, of all the envelopes that came back, address not known, the recipient was dead, and so forth. And I had noticed up to that point that there's an increasing effort to try to raise money that was failing, there's people, this is like, it was established in 1872, so by 1960, you'd look at it, 80-plus years of dispersal. In 1960, there was a request made, and they had a lawyer, Poplar Hill got a lawyer, and they freed it up, out of those constraints, and put it into a mutual fund. And the members of that board then, I think, determined that it was impossible, or it was a losing cause to raise money every year, and they used that money. And that's how that original fund got used up. Everybody on the existing board, well, actually goes back to, you know, probably 20, 30 years ago, the institutional memory was lost. And so, each succeeding board on, in Poplar Hill Cemetery Association just said, okay, this is how the people that got me into, onto this board did it, so we'll just keep doing it. And so, that's why about three or four years ago, we're looking into getting a nonprofit status with the IRS so that we can do some fundraising. And after some laborious efforts at doing the application, submitting it, ultimately failed, it didn't happen to, there was another flood, I think, and the tax department said they never received it. And so, what happened then was, was that we just kind of fell back into the pattern that the previous boards did, and, but here's a, this kind of a funny thing, is that in scanning the documents, I found that in 19, I think it was 63, it was in the early to mid 60s, we were granted the nonprofit status from IRS that we had been seeking.
Oh, wow.
And because of the loss of institutional memory, we didn't, nobody on the board knew that.
So, then you could, that means you could do fundraising.
We could, but then by that time, that was this year that I discovered this.
Right.
And then we realized that it was unlikely we could raise the monies needed to do-
Right.
-the repair of the bank.
Well, and then something in the minutes talked about grants. Have you applied for any grants and been denied?
We looked at grants originally about three or four years ago, and we didn't get, it was unsuccessful. But Bill George, who works for the East Montpelier Fire Department, said the grants, nonprofits are persona non grata when it comes to these federal grants, and that municipalities have priority over nonprofits. So, that was part of, what he said was considered by the members in attendance, and that swayed our thinking also to vote. Because we both had the experience of having failed to get grants, and we also heard that there was reasons why we failed.
Right. Well, it's my understanding, and Jim can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's not an automatic that the town has to take over the cemetery, if you're still, have your status. We would not be responsible for taking it over until, or if, you completely dissolved, which means you would no longer be the oldest nonprofit in the state.
But we would still have the option of not at that point as well, or not.
Jim?
But there was a "may" in there.
There's a "may."
Yeah, there's a "may" in there, it's a fact of the statute.
Yeah, so, I mean-
We just mis-sighted it the first time, it started, the number goes, but it's upon dissolution, the assets may be transferred to Callas Cemetery.
And in the case of the "may," then what happens?
In the case that "may"?
In case of "may not," what happens?
Yeah.
In "may not," well, that's an interesting question. I mean, I think it leaves over the, flees open the possibility that there could be a successor nonprofit that takes over the cemetery, or that it's transferred to another private association that's running cemetery.
Yeah, I just, have you checked out any of those other nonprofits to maybe take over?
I haven't, I'm not aware of any, I don't know what nonprofit.
I don't either.
Do you know what kind of nonprofits are out there?
There's one in East Montpelier.
For example, I mean, if Greenmont Cemetery, for example, was run by a private nonprofit similar to you, theoretically, your cemetery and your responsibilities could be transferred over to that association.
I don't think-
If they were willing.
Yeah, I don't know what might be, I don't know what might be out there, but it's just, it's just part of the discussion that we should have. Because for the, for Callas to take it over, that's a lot of money that is needed for repair, to be quite honest.
What if, Madam Chair, if, so, so Andy was talking about municipalities having better, greater effect at getting grants.
Right.
What if, I'm just thinking aloud, if like a municipal fire district was formed that involved East Montpelier and Callas townships?
To take it over.
And then-
You said fire, did you mean fire?
They call it a fire district.
Oh, anything.
It's a, it's a, and I'm asking it to Jim too, it's a municipal entity that's separate and aside from the town.
Yeah, yeah.
Water companies do that.
Right. It was the fire that proved it.
Yeah, well.
But that's what it's, that's what it's called for whatever reason, it's probably how it started out.
It should be a municipal erosion district.
Yeah. Well, yeah, because there is, because, you know, they did, Bill George did say it sounded like it was a East Montpelier problem being given to Callas in the minutes. So, I just wonder, have you talked to East Montpelier at all? Or are you thinking Callas because it's in Callas?
I think that the reason he said East Montpelier is because many of the people initially came from North Montpelier, which is part of East Montpelier.
Yeah.
But it is-
It's not exclusively.
Yeah, no, not exclusively.
No, no, I mean, you can look at the names and you can see that they're family names from, from all over, yeah, it's pretty interesting.
Yeah, it's very-
So, I just wanna, you know, I just wanna have a, you know, kind of an open discussion about what the options might be. And-
We're certainly gonna be out of money after next year, completely out of money.
Right.
And we may not have enough even to get through.
Why don't have enough for next year?
No.
You know, maybe we could set up a meeting sometime throughout, through the winter, in the winter with East Montpelier.
That's what I'm thinking.
And at least have it as one of the agenda items, we do that occasionally anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we could have this conversation, you know?
Because there may, there may be an opportunity to, to work with East Montpelier-
Share the costs.
So, to share the cost, I mean, we do that right now with the fire department.
Yeah.
You know, so there might be a joint venture opportunity here, so that it doesn't all fall on Callas taxpayers. You know, so there might be a joint venture opportunity here so that it doesn't all fall on Callis taxpayers. Because right now, our cemetery commission operates on forty-nine, like forty-nine thousand dollars a year. So.
Last night I got on the internet.
Yeah.
I checked out the Army Corps of Engineers.
Yeah.
And they do a lot of stuff with water and stuff like that. And so they've got a good thing on there. They did a lot for Irene when they had the flood down south.
Yeah, they did.
Maybe that might be a small job for them to think about if we have to take it over.
Yeah.
That's a good idea, John.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think Bill George had some information on that too.
Yeah.
Because there was a big landslide on Route fourteen right near his home. And he spoke of that, and I don't know exactly. He's knowledgeable about it.
So I guess maybe we should make a list. One would be to, and I'm assuming Katie, you're gonna keep track of the list. One would be to have a joint meeting with the Eastmont Pilliar Select Board and their cemetery people and our cemetery people and you folks. We can put Army Corps of Engineers on there. We can put the fire district idea.
Right, vis a vis, or nonprofit. So, so just for clarification, Eastmont Pilliar Fire Department's a nonprofit. And then they invoice us and they invoice Eastmont Pilliar. We have a contractual arrangement, which, which in addition to this, having them provide us services and us, and us them revenues, there's an allocation, there's a formula in there for how the, the costs are allocated across two towns. It's based on kind of a complicated formula, but involves basically population, the level of use and all that stuff. So, I mean, maybe we could arrive at the same thing if you stayed a nonprofit. Or maybe if, if this is true, that you're more likely to get grant monies or Army Corps assistance. Set up a fire, municipal fire district.
So what are you saying is the difference between a municipal fire district and what the fire department does between Callis?
Fires, we should have Jim chime in on this.
Right, yeah.
Fire thing throws everyone off. My understanding is you can set up an entity that performs municipal-type functions. But they're, they're separate and aside from the actual town.
A fire district is a limited purpose municipal entity providing services to a defined geographic region. They were originally established to provide fire services. Now typically they provide water or sewer services. But they are governed and they, they.
They're their own governing body.
Their own governing body.
Right.
Perhaps the, the simpler way to do it rather.
They can assess taxes too, right?
They can levy taxes.
In theory.
You might, you might just, you might consider rather than creating a new entity, perhaps just having a, an interlocal agreement between Callis and Eastmont Pilliar that could form a single board to oversee the operation, okay, to which each municipality contributes some funding each year.
Would that, and they, and they would still stay as the Poplar Hill Cemetery?
Depending on how you did it.
Nonprofit?
Okay, or it could be that they could dissolve and transfer their assets to this new joint entity.
Yeah.
Which is like what the fire departments do?
Yeah.
Yeah, similar. Another thought for you too, and I just budget, I mean, how much does it cost to keep it going every year?
It's been about around three thousand.
I mean, if they just did a, you know, you guys do social service agency appropriations every year without meetings. I mean, fifteen hundred dollars from Callis and fifteen hundred dollars from Eastmont Pilliar's a social service agency appropriated would fund all their maintenance.
The repair, the repair and.
But in the maintenance.
But in, but in the interim.
Yeah.
And then with a longer term plan.
I can get, since you have never been part of that before, you'll have to fill out a form. And this is really good timing because now is the time to fill out the form.
A form? What are you talking about?
Two, two requests being put on the Callis warning to be a social services agency. And I would think Eastmont Pilliar probably has the same type of.
To give an annual appropriation.
To get an annual appropriation. So you, are you, which town are you guys from?
Uh, East.
Eastmont Pilliar.
You're Eastmont Pilliar?
Yeah. Yeah, so, and what you're saying is go to the Eastmont Pilliar Select Board. That's, yeah, I mean, what Jim is suggesting.
For the interim.
And it doesn't preclude in concurrent, you know, would hap, it would happen in March. And then you'll know you have a budget for.
Next year.
For next year's maintenance while you work on some of these other, right, things that are longer term.
Yeah.
Solutions. Good idea.
And you have a little bit of money left over so it wouldn't even have to be a fault for different actions.
Well, it'd be good if you didn't eat into what you had left.
Right, yeah, but it's not have.
Try to cut your costs, you know.
You know, your funds completely spent.
And then, I'm just thinking out loud too, maybe, maybe the Poplar Hill Association could work with the cemetery commissions from each town, start working on project, how are we going to fund the repair of the bank?
Right.
Give you, you know, the cemetery commissions of each town giving you some manpower to sort of undertake this project. And maybe, you know, just a group, joint project to.
Come up with some ideas.
To come up with some funding ideas and repairing it. And then ultimately that allows you to, you know, get that repaired. Get an annual potential funding source from the social service agency appropriations, and you can keep existing as a.
Yeah.
We could make Jim a pop.
There is one other problem too, is that all of us, I think, are.
You're done.
Becoming elders, or are elders. Andy's the youngest.
I know.
But I, I, I mean, it sounded like you all still would really had your heart and soul in this. So there might still be an opportunity for you to still be part of, you know, of the fix.
With three members of our board, it's, it's getting harder to.
Yeah, we're a sort of a shadow of our former selves.
Yeah, and there's somebody in there said that, you know, there was some younger blood that was needed. Well, that's true everywhere. It's not just you folks, it's across Vermont. I mean, and do you put out a, a request for people to, to become a board member? Maybe Reed wants to become a board member.
Except Reed, oh, yeah, because Reed's in Callis.
Brownington.
I think I got experience there, Reed.
But Reed didn't seem like he was very interested.
So he came to the site.
It would be nice.
I just wanted to say, there's something called the Vermont Old Cemetery Association, and I think they do small grants. I don't know how small they are.
What's it called again, Reed?
The Vermont Old Cemetery Association.
Yeah, we have.
It's been around for years.
At the annual meeting, we talked, the grants are microscopic.
Okay.
Into the needle.
And look at their ability to give advice, so.
I think their advice is more on things like relocating graves of danger. There's also restoring stones.
Yeah.
That's what most of their grants are for. They're not into.
So could you get some grants along those lines to do some cleaning?
Well, they might be able to get grants, grants for cleaning, but I'm fairly certain we couldn't get grants to touch the bank.
Well, no, but I mean, if this is what Reed's talking about, there's obviously some stones there that are in desperate need of cleaning and maybe some other kind of repair work. That might be an opportunity to save some of the money that you have and some of the money that you might get appropriated to do some of that work.
Defender by its president.
Who is it?
Tom Giffen.
Fletcher?
So I'm just noticing, I mean, Andy's come to a couple of cemetery commission meetings, at least, at least do, and explain the situation. I, I get a sense that this is more that they're planning to go out of business. And one is because of the enormity of this repair that you're looking at for the restoration of the bank. And number two is just that your funds are dwindling down to nothing. So I don't know if you all, my sense was that you were planning on going out of business this month. So, and now we're, we're talking about reviving you and keeping you limping along.
You're out of the grave.
For a couple of years or whatever. But I'm wondering about the urgency of, because it looks like the repairing or restoring this bank was so daunting that you just said, we're just this little tiny nonprofit. There's no way we can afford this, so who could? And I think you were looking to Callis to being able to leverage grants or whatever to be able to do it, so. I just, you know, when I stand there and look over the bank and I see that gravestone over here that's ten feet away or whatever, I'm, I'm, in my mind, I'm just thinking about how long is this gonna take, you know? And, and John and I were walking in different places. We saw where the, the ground had sloughed away pretty recently, so. Has anybody given you, I mean, it sounds like there's a sense of urgency on your part that it needs to be done right away. And as, as we heard, you know, our, our budget is forty-nine thousand dollars right now through the town.
Would that increase?
There's no way that we could, I mean, we, I don't think we could go to the townspeople and ask them to chip in a hundred thousand dollars to repair this.
We never expected that to happen. There wouldn't be any one entity that would ever fund that.
Yeah, so what is the, what is your best scenario that, that could happen there?
Well, first I'd say that your description is very accurate, that's.
So you are looking to just be done. I, I thought maybe you were looking to be, have a way to not have to be done.
I think that Fletcher's is correct in that, in that we look around the room at the annual meeting. All the gray hairs, everyone is pretty much is older, older than the board. There's a, there are some.
I was there.
What's ours?
I was there.
Yeah, that's right.
I was just about to say, there's a.
For Callis, though.
I thought you were a reporter.
There was, yeah, there was, you know, there's some younger people, like they're probably in their forties, thirties, forties, but they're, these, the ones I talked to, they're busy with their lives and stuff, and they're not terribly excited about getting involved with the cemetery. The one point I'm concerned about is in terms of the urgency was, is that, and I, I wish I could speak more coherently about this, but I was led to believe in the annual meeting from Bill George that there's a, a funding cycle coming up. That we're a municipality to apply, you know, and I don't know what the timeframe is.
You mean for grants?
For grants, because there was some more monies coming.
Grants aren't as easy as they sound, because you get the money, yes. But then there's a lot, a lot of behind the scenes legwork involved with administering a grant. There's a lot of paperwork, a lot of accounting, there's reports that have to be written. So there's a lot of man hours or woman hours generally, what it amounts to, put into administering a grant. It's not like they just give you the money and you say thank you and go do your thing. There's a lot, a lot of work involved in administering and keeping track of a grant.
And they're small dollar amounts. It's not, most of them are not anywhere near a hundred thousand dollars.
No, right, right.
And then usually in the town business, we have to foot the bill.
And then we do the paperwork, and then we get reimbursed. Right, yes, usually.
I just want to look at this from another standpoint. What is the risk of this bank continuing to slough off? Does anybody have any kind of a best guess scenario, how many years this would take for it to reach that gravestone? And what about moving the gravestone out of the way?
I was gonna ask that question.
Instead of spending a hundred thousand dollars to.
Well, just to do the work that, to stabilize that bank, you probably, probably have to need that first set of graves just to get a truck back in there.
That's right.
So I think that's a given.
How much does it cost?
But the longer you wait, the more it's gonna cost to fix because you're losing room to work.
Do you have any written estimates from anyone about this?
No, because it would cost a lot of money.
Just to get the estimates. Do we know anybody? To do anything like this?
For Larrabee, construction. Anybody with a dump truck and a backhoe.
Right.
Who's that? Rick, engineering.
Yeah, civil engineering. Who else do we, just trying to see if we know anybody to get some reasonably priced help to, to go out and look at it. So, I don't, I don't.
Well, I think we're thinking about it through a cemetery lens, but the erosion issue is common, so maybe.
State?
Yeah, the state could, should at least feel to recommend.
Well, in the minutes, it said something about Bill George talked to somebody at the state and that's where the hundred thousand dollars came from. Was that just kind of a flyby look? That wasn't a real.
That was a flyby look.
Yeah, and I think he was sort of basing it on the erosion on Route fourteen near the bridge that's now being repaired. And I, I don't, I don't know the details, but knowing how much that cost.
Okay, so let's think about what, you have anything else, Fletcher?
No, not right now.
Okay, just trying to think, okay, let's see what our first steps might be. It sounds like maybe talking with Eastmont Pilliar. And I know you're not interested in long term, but I think maybe short term, getting that appropriation request in, even if it's only just to give us another year of maintenance costs being covered.
About three thousand, I would.
Yeah, yeah. And then working with, having this joint meeting with Eastmont Pilliar because they may have some ideas. And, or they may say, no, we're not interested, and then we're back to, what do we do?
Do they have a cemetery commission too, Eastmont Pilliar?
Yeah, yeah. I think, I think all towns have to, don't they? They don't have to?
Well, you have.
Somebody has to do something.
What you said earlier.
I think my cemetery commission has staff or.
Right, right, yeah.
So you're suggesting that we go to the town and ask that it be warned. So you would go to Callis and ask that it be.
Yeah, there's a form you fill out. I'm gonna, I've got a note to get the form to Andy. Andy, just fill it out. It's like one page.
But we can ask the town, if you're not from Callis.
We can ask Callis.
I don't think.
If you're not Callis residents.
We have a.
Callis is not Pilliar.
We have a number of nonprofits that request money from the town, you know.
Different states.
Senior community action, better women's.
But I mean, and we could explain it in this appropriation that it might be a one or two-year time request.
Yeah.
As we, and then we can explain it on the floor, you know, that we're working to come up with a long-term solution. But in the meantime, we have to have a means to take care of what's there. Maybe you folks could look at a small grant to get some help to clean the stones or.
Is there an imperative around that? I mean, is that the same as, as the erosion and some of the other issues? Like if, if you don't keep them clean, is it harder to do when you do it?
I, I think that's a, that's a non-issue.
Right.
It's taken us years to get around to each cemetery, and we haven't even finished within Callis. And we've been doing this for over five years.
Yeah.
I, I think cleaning stones is something that.
More important, more important issues.
That's what they're, what they're up against.
I had my own family monument cleaned this year individually, as I do down in Hope Cemetery and in La Barea and a couple of other places that I have family monuments.
Yeah, that's what we, we've done here in Callis, but we have volunteer days and nobody shows up. It just turns out to commissioners and Laura.
I had them professionally done.
Yeah, well, we had some professionally done, but it was quite costly and we're getting blowback from people in the town.
It looks really nice.
Yeah, it looks great.
Pressure washers clean them up pretty good.
Yeah.
They're using a special agent.
It's bad for granite instead of stones. Oh, really?
Yeah, because it takes weight.
Okay, for granite, but not marble or any of the older stones.
Slate.
That beats on, huh? Okay.
Anyway, if anybody wants to go look at Upper Old Fairview Cemetery, right now they're in primo condition.
Where is that one, Fletcher?
On the Callis Marshfield Road.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're going up, it's on the left. And, and they look like they're brand new. They glow. It's amazing.
Well, so, yeah, so on the other hand, I mean.
It would look like a cemetery that people.
Right, might be more interested.
But I, but still, I mean, if it's not the biggest priority, then I think at least putting our, especially putting Laura and Peter's energy, the things that we're asking them to do when they're feeling like, okay, you guys are running thread, threadbare and you, and you, you're here because of that and.
Right. I'm not sure what the timing might be to get a joint meeting because I know towns, because we are, are starting to work on budgets and town reports and stuff like that, so.
We can make an overture though, right?
Right, I, I mean, I can reach out to them and talk to Seth Gardner and Bruce Johnson, who's their administrator.
Well, we will be having a meeting with them. We do like every December on Fire Department.
Fire Department, so we could maybe do it then.
Fire to help.
As far as the administration of a grant, I, I've handled several large grants. I, I was the director of the Good Samaritan Haven Home and Shelter in Barry. I, I was the director of the Good Samaritan Haven Home and Shelter in Berry and the Good Neighbors Family Home, Homeless Shelter in Also and Berry. And each time, our budget was over two hundred thousand each year for each of those. But in addition to that, twice we raised four, four hundred thousand for, for remodeling, and that was all grants.
Yeah, I just know from our staff here, the computer reporting requirements and stuff now are much more significant than they used to be.
Well, I, I did all that.
Yeah.
And it depends if it's federal or state too.
It was mostly federal.
Yeah, and the federal government wants a lot more, yeah. So I'm just trying to get a sense of where we're at, so I know how to plan agendas and stuff going forward. Jim, do you have anything else to add to enlighten us?
You were talking, you were talking about three thousand dollars, um, probably two fifteen hundred dollar units from Callas and East Montpelier. And we've got Wyatt already mowing that, so.
I mean, he's already doing it.
Wyatt has been doing it for a long time.
But, but Wyatt gets paid from them, not from us.
Right, right.
But, yeah, we can't just pay him out of our cemetery commission funds.
No, no, because it's not a Callas cemetery.
So we are gonna owe.
For one more bill, I think.
Yeah, so your funds are even more depleted.
Yeah.
Did you say there's property on the west side of fourteen that's part of the cemetery?
No.
Uh, no, not on the west side of fourteen, but on the west side of the cemetery facing fourteen.
I see, okay.
Yeah, I think we walked, yeah, we walked over there. All right, so we're gonna get you the forms to fill out to request some money. I'll reach out to East Montpelier. And see when we might get to together, I don't know what people's schedules are like, but it's, it's two cemetery commissions, two select boards and you folks. So people, you know, the scheduling, it could be a little, a little difficult. Mondays are generally, East Montpelier has their select board meetings on Mondays, we generally have ours on Mondays. So that's usually a good day for us. I know my board has usually got their schedules open for Monday nights most times.
So it would be important between now and then too, for these folks to have a similar meeting with East Montpelier's select board. To get them up to speed, get them thinking about it, and then convene.
You know, I also am away an awful lot. I'm gonna be gone all of November. I have another commitment that I'm not going to tonight, every Monday night. So I sort of feel like Andy cannot do all the meetings, although he is the most knowledgeable, so.
Can you get other folks on the board to step up?
There's just one more.
I think we're seeing it right here.
Is it?
That's, that's the, that's really the problem.
That's a big, that's a problem, yeah.
That is really the problem.
It's a huge problem.
It would be one meeting, as I see, I mean, just to let them know what we're thinking and what you're thinking and what we're willing to do in the interim and.
But I wonder if we could.
Get them on board.
Can we just skip that, instead of having them have to do a, another meeting with East Montpelier? And then we all come together with East Montpelier, can we?
But it's, it's, it's us advocating for them, and, and so there's a lot of processing that won't have happened. We've already had a lot of processing here that.
Right.
On the email over the last month and a half, two, for all summer.
I could have, I could probably meet with Seth.
Yeah, yeah, why don't you, well, you, why don't you do that?
I might be able to do that. My time is, uh, is questionable at this point, because we're dealing with some health crises.
Right, yeah, and that's obviously more important.
I think that's, I mean, yeah, and we, if we have a meeting with the select board, we can, we can bring it, bring it forward. It's just for them to hear from you.
First.
And also to understand where you guys are. I, I, I get it, you're, you've already, you've already given the energy to the board, to, to the cemetery, to keep, to carry it this far. And you're asking us for help, and we're kind of obviously feeling a little, which is where you are too.
A little overwhelmed, like we are.
Yeah, yeah, so we need, we need time to process and we have, but we have peers in East Montpelier and, um, that's the place to start, is open the conversation.
Yeah, I mean, if you guys at least open the door.
Yeah.
And then we, and then we can have, you know, a, a joint.
It could be an email too, I mean, you can do that.
Right, you can send it to Bruce Johnson and to Seth.
Yeah.
You know, if Andy sends them an email and we can, our, our minutes are public, so when Katie gets the minutes up, you can send them a copy of the minutes from this meeting, which might help them understand.
That'd be helpful.
Yeah.
You know, here, here's, we met with the Callas Select Board and Cemetery Commission, here's the minutes, here's what we talked about, here's some, and Katie's got a list of the ideas. So they won't have to start right from scratch like we did.
And I think also being really clear with them that, yes, the cemetery's in, in Callas. Um, but it's right across the line from East Montpelier, it's part of the North Montpelier community, and it has served that corner of East Montpelier for, what, a hundred years, a hundred and fifty years.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, so making, really sure that they understand the hook.
Right.
For East Montpelier.
Cliff, do you have any questions or comments?
Um, is it correct, I understand that there are Civil War veterans entered in the cemetery?
Yes.
Has there ever been any research done into what national preservation of Civil War cemetery, era cemeteries? There are options there? Have you looked into any of those possibilities?
This is the first I've heard of that.
Well, Katie will put it on the list. That's a good idea, that's a good idea, yeah, a good idea. Yeah, because they're very interested in preserving the monuments and.
Especially if you have older stones that could be considered monuments, that really opens up a door to a lot of funding.
You mean grants or just funding?
Funding.
Just funding, because just funding would be great, do a whole boatload of paperwork.
There's definitely groups out there that, the reason I know about this is, I used to work for a company that installed ticketing systems at national parks and historic monuments. And I was the guy who was assigned to go through the South, working with all of those, and there were a lot of cemeteries involved.
You see, you know what it's called? Did you look it up?
Um, I can certainly do some research, there's a number of them though, yeah.
I wonder if there's one that's specifically for Vermont, because don't forget, we've got that stone over at Memorial Hall that's got the, the veterans, Civil War and whatnot, veterans on it. And I think there was some funding that was gotten, was there funding that was gotten for that from some?
We didn't have any funding.
Some, something, they got funding somehow to add more names to that monument and get it cleaned or something.
Who comes around and puts the flags up for the veteran, for, um?
I think the.
Wyatt.
Wyatt in the school.
Sometime by the school kids at, in Robinson.
I think the sixth graders do it.
Elliot Morse is involved in that.
Excuse me?
Elliot Morse is involved in.
In the flags?
He would know all about that.
Elliot?
He's on the East Montpelier Cemetery Commission.
But I don't know that he, he wouldn't put them up in Callas, but somebody does.
I saw some in Poplar.
Wyatt, Wyatt, Wyatt does, he buys a bunch of them and he puts some of them up, and then there's a school that brings a bunch of kids over and they do it in the spring.
Oh, okay. Around Memorial Day.
It used to be the Women's Relief, was it the Women's Relief Corps or?
The Stone, the Stone Women's Relief Corps, which is pretty much abandoned.
Yeah, and then they said, we don't want to do it anymore.
Yeah, yeah.
Same situation.
Yeah, kind of the same situation, you know, it's one of the oldest groups in the United States is the Stone Women's Relief Corps.
Be glad you don't have a building to maintain.
Right, well, they have a shed. So are you guys, I mean, I think this has been a really good discussion and there's some ideas out there and some opportunities, I think.
Thank you for.
Yeah.
For the, for the work that you've done, for sticking with it.
I mean, this can't be easy for you folks, you know, I'm sure it's not, it's an emotional.
It's a labor of love.
Right.
It's an emotional issue, and I appreciate that.
So you are going to send out the minutes with the one, two, three ideas of.
Right, well, that'll, and that'll help you open the door, I think, for discussing things with East Montpelier, even if you start with Bruce and Seth.
Do you know their email addresses?
Yeah, she's got them, well, yeah.
Oh, they'll be on all that.
On those emails I've sent you.
I'll, I'll go talk to Seth first.
Yeah, yeah, he'll be on the website tomorrow.
He's right next door.
He's my neighbor.
Oh, well, there you go, invite him over for coffee in cemeteries.
And share, and share cows.
I'll probably go along with Tractor.
Have some coffee?
He doesn't stop.
Play polo.
Give him some milk in here.
Oh, yeah, I learned how to play polo there.
Right, there you go. Do you have a copy of your bylaws? You said something about your bylaws.
No, this is, this is taken from the bylaws, but this is, it has the, I know you have them.
You can email them to me, you don't have to have them tonight. Yeah, just scan them and send them to me and we can post them in this, in this Google folder, just so you know, if you go on the Callas, Town of Callas website. You'll see where there's the minutes and that's where Katie will post the minutes that you can use to talk with Seth. And they'll be on the calendar, can we go to the calendar?
Can you send the minutes and on the agenda, the link?
The link, the link to the public folder, so that if Seth and those guys want to look at documents, you won't have to, maybe you won't have to resend them all again, they could just go there and.
Send them the link?
Send them the link to the documents.
Can I upload to that or not? Probably not, right?
No.
Okay.
No, but we can, you send them to us.
What you'll see is in the minutes that Katie publishes, there will be a link to the folder for all these documents. You can copy that link and send it to anybody.
Right.
But they can't, but they can't.
We might be able to share the folder with Andy.
But any folder, any documents, our bylaws, I'd have to send.
Send them to Denise, Denise, I'll have Katie load them into the folder.
We can share the folder for tonight's meeting, no, it's Google Docs.
Right, it's a public folder, it's that public documents folder.
Yeah, I know, but, but Cliff could actually share it with.
That we could share and give them permission to load stuff into, if we decide we want to do that.
I think that's not really in tune with our website policy right now.
Well, I, I mean separately, he could share the documents in there into a folder, a separate folder, it wouldn't be a town folder, just send it over to him.
So if you look at the Poplar Hill Agenda for tonight. And there's, see the link right there?
Oh, yeah.
You click on that.
Okay, that can download whatever.
Right.
You should be able to download it.
I'm happy to send any stuff too.
Right, that, I think that's the better way to do it.
There you go, yeah, I didn't.
Yeah, we did that, yeah, it's all public.
Oh, email the bylaws, I'm not sure, but the bylaws I might have with me tonight may not be the most recent.
Okay, yeah, just when you get a chance, if you send them to me, then we can put them in the folder. And these are all documents that East Montpelier can then already have a collection of, so it'll make it easier for them.
So just before we leave, to make it clear for me, they, you are going to continue to exist then and sort of look at some alternative funding to keep the cemetery going for the next year?
We are gonna have to get funding though.
And the town of, yeah, and, yeah. And the town of Callas is not going to take over.
Immediately.
Poplar Hill Cemetery.
No, I think they're.
At least immediately, we're not gonna be taking this over as of October this month.
It doesn't sound like you want to, but this hinges, it seems to me, on the fact that we have to get a little bit more money to pay for the upkeep of the cemetery.
Right, I mean, I think there's some things, I, I think it's not maybe fair to say we don't want to. You have to understand that this is a big, this is a big deal for us to have, to take this over. You know, it's a lot of money that's needed to fix the erosion, and it's, it's not that easy, because you guys have to officially dissolve. And I don't know what paperwork you have to do to officially dissolve.
Don't we have a lawyer here?
Yeah.
I don't either.
I don't know what that, what they have to do to officially dissolve.
They have to come up with a plan, dissolution has to be approved by their members. That has to provide for how they will wrap up their business and how they will transfer their remaining assets. Once that's approved by the membership, then you record that or you, you transmit that to the Secretary of State's office. And there's probably gonna be some public comment or public opportunity to, to do something. And once that period of time passes, the remaining officers of the entity, although you can't do any business, the one thing that you can do is effectuate, sign the documents to transfer those assets away and close up the entity's business.
So there are some official documents that.
Yes, there are, you can't, you can't just say we're not gonna hold any more meetings. You do have to go through this process of winding up your business and giving it to Secretary of State's office.
Where are those, I mean, where are those, where are those directions and forms on the Secretary of State's website?
No, they're in Vermont statutes, it's Title eleven B, as in boy. And just give me a moment, I'll give you the chapter number.
And if we were to.
Dissolve.
If we were to take over the cemetery.
Yeah.
Do we, is there just a deed or something? Is it just a simple transference of a deed or?
There ought to be what I would call an asset transfer agreement beforehand, sort of, okay, this is what we plan on doing, and this is how we're going to effectuate this transfer. So essentially upon dissolution, then there will be probably, I'm just thinking like a bill of sale for the asset, some sort of document that says that, okay, now these assets in this account will become the property of the Town of Callas. And then as to the real estate, it'll probably, would probably just be a quick claim deed, I can't imagine anything more than that.
Wouldn't have to do a appraisal or, what do you call it?
Survey.
Survey. It depends on the nature of the boundaries, I mean, if there was a question about the boundaries of the property, it certainly would be in the town's interest to have a survey done. So that it would know what it was acquiring and making sure that there weren't any title issues that go along with it. A survey isn't required, but it might be a good idea, okay? And I just also would suggest that the town, we've done some level of due diligence about this, but I think that there ought to be maybe just a little bit heightened level of due diligence about the monies and, and the obligations that go along with those monies.
Yeah.
There might be some, some documents there that say, for example, this money is to be used for this specific purpose, so that we know what those purposes are and make sure that those things can be fulfilled. So.
It says East Montpelier, I'm gonna give you.
What does it say? Poplar Hill Cemetery of East Montpelier in the County of Washington, Jim. What year was that? Two hundred and eight dollars and forty cents.
I thought it said eighteen seventy-nine.
I think that sounds about right, it'd be down at the bottom.
Right, the signature line or something.
I don't know, just, just.
Eighteen ninety-two.
Eighteen ninety-two.
Go back up, please, just a little bit, right there.
Eighteen ninety-two, all the siblings are involved.
But why does it say land in?
Piece of land in Callas, and I think it's called the Poplar Hill Cemetery Association.
And they're heirs and assigns a certain piece of land in Callas.
In Callas, yeah.
But why does it say East Montpelier up there?
It's describing the role of the high wood.
It's.
Where does it say?
That's what I think, that's what I think.
Callas, Washington.
By full satisfaction by George Butler.
Here's where it says East Montpelier, but it's saying.
Oh, he's from, the seller is from East Montpelier.
No, I think it's just that recognizing that the trust, the Poplar Hill Cemetery Association probably had its place of business in East Montpelier, just as it does right now.
Yeah.
Okay, that's where its sort of business office was at the time, but the land is in Callas.
Oh, oh, I see, yes, yes.
And it's got lovely meets and bounds, as long as you can find that ash tree.
Right, I was gonna say, up on the ash tree, huh?
Ash tree. Record the Emerald Ash.
I was gonna say, it's probably got Emerald Ash board disease now.
I mean, that's probably a legally sufficient description to transfer property in stable mono, though it may not be, but.
It's like more or less.
More or less, right, more or less it's over by that tree somewhere.
Yeah. I mean, I think, I mean, I think our goal is to work with, with you folks, that's what we want to do, and the Cemetery Commission, and so we just need to, to work together to solve this problem.
Well, we don't have any options or choices, so we're gonna work with whoever we can work with.
Well, then you're lucky you got us to work with.
Right, now you're a team.
Right, now it's bigger, so maybe you feel a little better. Okay?
In the meanwhile, we'll pray to the sky gods.
For, like, it to rain pennies? No, not pennies anymore, that won't help.
Do you, John, do you think there's, it would be possible for a representative from the Cemetery Commission, Callas, to be, you know, basically the appointed point person?
Appointed to our cemetery commission too.
To your group and in East Montpelier, if they did the same thing, then you'd have two more, two more people.
We're gonna have Juanita.
Bless you.
They know.
Because it helps through our communication.
And then you got, you got a rep from each town and they work with you and assist you with the business, but also help you transition this, you know?
Yeah.
So one, so there you go.
So you got, you got one more helper?
How much roof up do I need to have?
And maybe, and maybe when you talk to Seth, you know, he can, you know, open the door for you guys to talk to the cemetery, unless you already have a Cemetery Commission.
We already have a Cemetery Commission, Elliot Morris is the, oh, actually, he's just stepped down as a.
I think Alan Flueff also stepped down, so I don't know.
As a guy following, he's taken over.
There you go.
The Cemetery Commission.
Well, you have some young people on yours, you, Andy Fletcher.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
And Juanita. And Juanita.
Hey, I'm gonna discuss you throughout Saturday. I'm a senior citizen. That's nothing. It's still a senior, most places consider you a senior citizen.
You're gonna milk that for all you can, aren't you?
Damn right. And Andy, you know how to get ahold of me.
Take what you can get.
So, let's keep the discussion, you know, let's keep things moving.
And meanwhile, if there's any other documents or anything else, maybe.
I don't know, Jim, can you think of anything else we wanted? The bylaws, I think we could.
The bylaws would be helpful, we've got the, what's needed, the deed, we know where the deed is located.
Yeah.
Got it sort of general outline right now of what the financials, where the accounts are, I mean, if that was, we're moving toward that. The chapter, it's Title eleven B, as in boy, for dissolution of nonprofit corporations, it's chapter fourteen.
Chapter fourteen.
Chapter fourteen of eleven B. We're gonna just plan a dissolution approved by the memberships and filing articles of dissolution with the Secretary of State's office. What it involves, it's, it's not particularly complicated.
Yeah, doesn't sound like it's too bad. So they would probably have to hold another meeting and vote to dissolve?
Yes.
We already did that, actually.
Yeah.